Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I will be moderating the first part of the meeting tonight. So hopefully you're here to join us for our air quality informational session and public hearing on the Smith Creek landfill. So really appreciate everybody joining with us tonight. We're going to go over a few kind of housekeeping things, stuff like that before we get started into the actual meeting. So I wanted to just go over a few of those with you. The first thing is your lines will be muted during the meeting tonight until we get to the question and answer. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in a minute. We are recording this meeting, so if for some reason you have to leave early or you know someone who wasn't able to join tonight, we will be sending out a follow-up email with the link to that recording in the next couple of days. So you'll be able to share that with anybody who had to miss. So a little bit on how things will work tonight. I'd like to go over this a couple of times just to make sure folks understand there's a few differences in how we are going through the evening. So the first part of the evening is going to be an informational session. So what we'll do is you'll meet all the staff that are here tonight. We'll have some staff that will go over a short presentation about what the permit application was for, what the request was for. Once we get past that, we will do a question and answer. Well, where we will be able to interact with you, respond to questions that you have, hopefully get you some clarification on anything that maybe didn't make sense, things like that. And there'll be a couple of ways to ask those questions and I'll go over that in just a second. Then the second part of the evening will be the public hearing. And during the hearing, we will have a formal opening statement. We'll take comments on the record. Then we'll close the meeting and we'll have a little bit of things after the hearing is over as well. The one thing about the hearing is that we won't be able to interact with you. So sometimes people will ask a question during their comment. And I just like to let folks know that we won't be responding during that time because those comments are strictly for the record. Another thing that we like to go over before we get started into the actual meeting is just our group norms for the meeting tonight. So this slide was developed in conjunction with some Flint environmental groups as part of a project that we did. And this has been really helpful for us in making sure that our meetings are really respectful of the folks that who have taken the time out of their night to join us. So a couple of the things that we'd just like to go over is, you know, listen actively with an ear to understanding, ask questions and request clarification. That's definitely one of the main reasons why we're here tonight is to hopefully give you information that may be helpful. Criticize ideas and not individuals, that's obviously very important. Communicate respectfully and then take space and make space. And what that means is just making sure that everyone who would like to ask a question gets to do that. And anyone who would like to speak gets to do that as well. All right, so I want to go over, oops, sorry, I got a little fast with my clicks today. All right, so I wanted to go over just a quick agenda of how things are going to run. But the first thing that I want to do is introduce the staff that I have with me tonight. And the first person that I want to do introduces Annette Switzer. So Annette is the decision maker for this project tonight. And I know she wants to welcome all of you to the meeting. So Annette, if you want, you can go ahead and take it away whenever you're ready. And I'm not seeing your camera, I'm just letting you know that, but I will let you know when I can hear you.
Um yeah, thank you, Jen. My camera for some reason is not working, but I will go ahead. Earlier, so I'm not sure what's going on. Hopefully it will start working as I start my welcome, but thank you. And as Jen mentioned, I'm Annette Switzer, the Director of the Air Quality Division and the Decision Maker for this permit action. We truly appreciate you joining us tonight, virtually this evening. We encourage you to ask questions, share your thoughts and provide your comments on the proposed permit. As a decision maker, I'll be paying close attention to the conversation tonight. Engaging with community members is a vital part of our permitting process. And the impact that we receive often leads to meaningful improvements within our permits. This evening, you'll hear from my staff about how we evaluate permit applications, the types of comments that are considered in our decision-making process. We also will discuss the details of the draft permit, highlighting specific aspects that may be of particular interest to you. I'll now let you continue with the rest of the evening. As I mentioned, I'll be listening closely to the discussion and the hearing. I strongly encourage you to ask questions or submit comments if you wish. Thank you once again for being here tonight and Jen, I'll hand it back over to you.
Well, thanks a lot, Annette, I appreciate that. Sorry, your camera's not working, that's frustrating. We were just, we just tried them all out and it worked fine. So hopefully all the rest of my staff, if you guys could turn your cameras on, that would be great. Hopefully they work and everybody won't just have to look at me. Oh, awesome, all right, I'm seeing everybody pop on, that's perfect. So we do have quite a few staff members here tonight and I want to just introduce you to them here. They'll be, you'll be hearing more from them throughout the evening and then obviously have the question and answer portion for sure. So the first person I want to introduce is Rajesh Patel and he is our Permit Engineer for this permit application. You're going to be primarily hearing from him, he's going to walk you through a little bit about what the Air Quality Division does, how this process works, because that's something that, you know, folks don't always understand if you don't do this all the time like we do. And then I'm going to roll it over to Arana Kananahali and he is the Inspector for the facility. So he'll also be talking a little bit about what his role is as the inspector for a landfill like Smith Creek. The other folks that I have on the line here are Rick Welch. So he is one of our toxicologists. So what the toxicologists do is during an air permit, they will look at toxic air contaminants and they do things like developing screening levels for air toxics and they have a really important job in the permitting process. And I've got Erica Wolf with us, she is in our air monitoring section. So what her group does is works with the stationary air monitors around the state. It's called a network and so she'll be able to answer questions about that. Also have Steph Hangspa and she is one of our meteorologists. So she's also an air modeler. So monitoring, modeling, they kind of sound the same, but they're very different. What Steph does when it comes to a permit application is she's actually looking at what those air pollutant releases might look like for the community before they're actually there to make sure that everything's safe. She uses a computer model to do that, so it's a pretty cool thing. We also are lucky to have Aaron Darling on, he's a geologist in our Materials Management Division. So we asked him just to join in in case there's questions that come up that he can answer that are a little bit outside of air quality. And he's just here to listen and make sure that he knows what kinds of questions community members might have about this project. The last person I want to quickly introduce, I know she likes to hide in the background, is Caitlin De Vries. But we couldn't do these meetings without her help and assistance on the technological portion of running the Zoom meeting. So thanks to Caitlin for that. So Bee, if you want to leave your camera on, everybody else, you can turn yours off for now. Arana, you'll turn yours back on once we get to your section of the presentation here. But so how this will go is in a minute, I'm going to pass the microphone over to Rajesh and he's going to run us through a little bit more of that information session. So he'll talk a little bit about the proposed permit. Then we'll go over to Arana to talk about compliance, then we'll shift over to our question and answer session. Once we get to seven o'clock or when everybody's done asking questions, whatever comes first, we'll shift over into that public hearing portion. Once the hearing's over, we'll talk a little bit more about how you can still submit an official comment if you want to. You don't have to submit one tonight if you don't want to. And this is definitely not your only opportunity to submit comments if you do want to. So we have some other ways that you can do that. We'll also talk about where you can find other information and then how you can contact us if you have any other questions. So without further ado, Rajesh, I am passing the microphone and the presentation over to you, so go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yes, I'm ready, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer, good evening and thank you for privilege of your time. My name is Rajesh Patel and I'm the Lead Permit Engineer for the Smith Creek Air Permit Application. I've worked with the team of Air Quality Staff, including some of the folks on our panel, to review the application. Before we get, we get into the details of the project, I would like to talk about what the Air Quality Division does and how the permitting process works. Air pollution comes from the different sources, including the power plant, pure burning vehicles, landfill and various industrial sources. The overall mission of the ACD is to protect public health and the environment. We provide this protection by using our authority under the state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. ACD staff do lots of different things. We monitor level of the air pollutant. We look at air toxic contaminant to make sure the public health is protected. We conduct inspection of facility like the Smith Creek landfill. And we review the application and write a permit for source of air pollutant to make sure the proposed project comply with the state and federal rules to protect public health. ACD staff, I would like to point out a few things that the draft permit does not cover that we are not able to regulate. This includes zoning, noise and traffic on the public roads. If you have question or concern about this issue, you will want to talk to your local government. When it comes to evaluating comments received for a permit application, it is important to hear the opinion of resident. However, we cannot base our decision on whether the resident supports or opposed the project or believe it is necessary. We have to evaluate the project to ensure it meets the applicable ACD rules. If the project meets these rules, we are required to issue permit. To make sure the company is meeting all rules and regulations, they need to follow a permit to install for the ACD. I would like to give you the simple overview of the air permitting process. First, the company decides they must install, modify or construct a source of air emission. Then the company submits a permit application. The permit application is a review by engineer, engineer like myself to decide if the request can meet the state and federal ACD rules. During the review, other ACD staffs are involved to help with the different parts of the review, like the member on our panels. This includes the review of the toxic air contaminants, also called TACs, and how the emission may impact the surrounding community. If these rules are met, the engineer creates a draft permit. A public comment is required, as in this case, the draft permit is posted for the public to comment on. Public comment is very important part of the permitting process, which is why we are talking with you tonight. Once the comment period ends, we evaluate all the comments submitted. The comments can lead to changes in the permit and the final decision. Finally, a decision is made on the permit application. This decision could to approve the permit as written, approve the permit with changes or to deny the permit. This decision is based on whether what the company wants to do can meet the ACD regulation. So here's a landfill diagram that is zoomed into the focus of the ACD topics. So please ignore the numbering and the full diagram can be found on the Eagle website. So it all starts when the waste is compacted to the landfill using heavy machinery. The landfill gas is produced mainly through the bacterial decomposition of the waste material and is made up of methane, carbon dioxide and the trace gases such as hydrogen sulfide or H2S. The gas is generated from the breakdown of the waste is collected in the pipe called the gas collection system. This gas collection system pull the gases toward the pipes where it is either sent to the engine at the blue water renewal facility to generate electricity and/or burn in open flare. It is important that the gas is routed to one of these places or both because otherwise gases can escape the landfill and cause order issue. The application is responsible for this information session and public areas focus on the open flare. So this is the main part of the PTA application. So let me give you some background, the history of, in November 2023, Smith Creek installed a temporary open flare under permit exemption to make sure the all gas from this part of the landfill is burnt. After the temporary flare was installed, Smith Creek realized that sulfur content of the landfill gas was increasing and could no longer meet the exemption requirement. This increase triggers the need for the further evolution and air permitting. In December 2023, Smith Creek submitted an air permit application to address the sulfur increase by replacing the temporary flare with the large one. In April 2024, Smith Creek replaced the temporary flare before receiving an air permit. The ACD cited violation against Smith Creek because of the increase in the sulfur content and the open flare operation without an air permit. Part of the Smith Creek plant to return to compliance is to get a permit for the sulfur increase and the open flare installed in April 2024, which is what this application is about. Smith Creek is proposing the following process. The landfill gas not consumed by the blue water renewal facility would be facilitated in a control device to remove the pollutant such as hydrogen sulfide. This control device is important because otherwise a landfill gas emission could cause order issue. After leaving the control device, the landfill gas is routed through a blower. The landfill gas is burned to the flare. The proposed condition associated with this project will not allow the flare to combust landfill gas without it first going through the control device. Here is a map of the facility showing where the flare is located and the part of the landfill the flare is servicing. The map can also be found in Figure 2 of the Technical Fact Sheet. So this is where when you enter it, you will see the blue water and the flare. This is the location of the flare and it's, it's source this area around the cell eight. And this is approximately where everything's located if you are looking on the Google map or from the aerial view. Now that we talk about what Smith Creek is requesting, let's talk about how we review a permit application. When reviewing a proposed project, the permit engineer works with other ACD staff. This review includes state and federal rules that applies to the project, evaluating the proposed air emission against the rules that apply. This includes the checking the emission calculation and air toxicity to make sure the toxic air contaminant meets ACD's health-based screening level. Air modeling for criteria pollutant and toxic contaminants when needed. We need to know if the Smith Creek proposed flare meet this requirement. I'm going to talk more in detail about the different parts of reviewing in the coming slides. So in this slide, I will talk about the category of the group of air pollutants and then bit about what the Smith Creek is proposing. The first group are criteria pollutant. This is a small group of well-studied and regulated pollutant such as sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxide, carbon monoxide, volatile organic compounds and particulate matter. U.S. Protection Agency sets national ambient ACD standard referred to as NAAQS for this pollutant to protect the public health and environment. Any release of this pollutant must be below NAAQS. The hazardous air pollutant or HAPs are larger group of pollutant. These are known or suspected to cause health effect of environment effect. We regulate these pollutants by applying any federal regulation that exists. If a specific regulation exists, as in this case, then we look at this pollutant to make sure they comply with the federal regulation. The last one, the toxic air contaminants are the larger group. And as I can point out that this is a growing list, as we come across new chemical, our ACD toxicology is developed the same level. It's by Michigan rule, so this is, it's applicable to the state regulation only. They include almost any air pollutants, including hazardous air pollutants. Our rules allows our toxicology self health-based screening levels for the toxic contaminants. Pollutants being released must meet this health-based screening levels. I will talk a little bit more about this different pollutant in the next few slides. So I want to talk more detail about toxic air contaminants, also known as TACs, and how at their health-based screening levels. The screening levels are designed to protect against health issue, including the developing cancer or breathing problem. When we perform a review, we look at the maximum emission rate for all toxic air contaminants from the flare burning the landfill gas. Our review determine its emission will not violate the health-based screening levels. More detailed information about the technical aspect of the toxic review can be found in Technical Fact Sheet. This table shows the potential criteria pollutant emission from this project. This information can also be found in Table 1 of the Technical Fact Sheet. So what you're looking at is this is the emission from the proposed project which is open flare. Now, one thing I wanted to pinpoint to hear is the ozone is a criteria pollutant, but VOC plays a significant role in the formation of ozone in the atmosphere. So what is the modeling and what is, why is it important, the review of the permit application? The computer modeling predicts what concentration neighborhood could be exposed to under the worst-case scenario. The modeling simulates a grid of virtual air morting surround the facility. This allows the highest concentration to be considered. Part of the toxic review involve performing computer modeling. Modeling also was done for the nitrogen oxide, carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, as was the particulate matter less than 10 and 2.5 microns. The modeling showed the model toxic air contaminants meet that health-based screening level and the model criteria pollutant will be in compliance with the National Ambient ACD Standards. So let's talk about permit now. The permit is a legally enforceable document with a list of requirement called condition the company must comply with. The requirement in the permit ensured the project operates as described in the application and the way it was reviewed by myself and the rest of the ACD permitting team. A permit has requirements such as emission limit, material limit, proper operating parameters for control device and other equipment, testing, associated monitoring, record-keeping and reporting condition. The proposed draft permit condition for the Smith Creek includes carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide and visible emission limit. The landfill gas use limit on annual basis as well as the flow rate of the landfill gas going to the flare. And the sulfur content limit on the gas going to the flare. For operational condition, there are capacity limit for the flare as well as the heating value of the gas. The H2S cover must properly operating and maintaining. Smith Creek also will make sure the landfill gas collection system is pulling the gas toward the H2S cover and the subsequent flare. Smith Creek will also be required to create and implement a preventative maintenance, which is also known as BM, and malfunction improvement plan, also called MAP. These are used for preventing, detecting and correcting the future potential malfunction or equipment failures resulting in unanticipated emission. They must approve by the ACD to make sure the emission are addressed. There are also testing condition, including verifying the sulfur content, visible emission coming of the flare and the net heating value of the landfill gas which is related to the methane content. Now that we covered the permit application review, I'm going to turn it over to the District Representative, Irana Kananahali, so that he can tell you what the district inspector does.
Good evening, my name is Irana Kananahali. I'm an ACD District Inspector in Warren. The inspector for this facility or landfill known as Smith Creek landfill. Part of my role is to determine if the company is operating, company is operating in compliance with their permits as well as state and federal regulations. We do this by conducting inspections, reviewing company reports, records and observing various air quality emission tests. Typically, an inspection entails the following steps. An onsite inspection to visually inspect equipment and operations. Verifying that the process is operating as required by the permit. Obtaining the monitoring and operational information. Reviewing a company's records as required by the permit and regulations. We, we use all these things to determine the company's compliance. Emission test observation. Emission tests, otherwise known as TAC tests, are another method the ACD uses to determine compliance. Air quality staff does not do testing. However, we approve the test plan and are onsite during the testing. During the test, we will inspect equipment and record any important operating parameters. While you observe the emission tests, we make sure that the company operates the equipment in a way that represents normal operations and that specific approved methods are followed during the test. Results from these tests also help show whether company is in compliance with their air permit. Reviewing company's records and data. Company's records, monitoring data and reports are important to show continuous compliance and are required to verify compliance. For example, records related to specific operating parameters as well as ongoing emissions calculations are thoroughly reviewed to make sure the company is meeting the limits in their permit which are in place to protect public health, safety and welfare and comply with the air quality rules and regulations. And with that, I will pass it back to Jennifer Dixon.
All right, well, thank you guys so much for all of that information, much appreciated. So this is the part of the night when we are going to get into question and answer. So I am going to ask you guys to turn your cameras back on. Sorry, go ahead and take a drink of water, whatever you need to do. But if I could have my panelists turn their cameras back on. So a little bit of information for folks that are joining us. So I want to just let you know that we do have about 27 people that are attending outside of our panel. So just wanted to let folks know that sometimes, I know Caitlin shares the number, but sometimes we still get asks for that. So I always just like to share. We do have someone who is calling in. So if you're calling in and you have a question that you'd like to ask the panel, you can push pound two on your phone and that will raise your hand so that we know you want to ask a question. We can unmute your line. Anyone else who would like to ask a question, you can feel free to use that raise hand icon on the bottom of your screen. Or of course, we're happy to have you just type your questions in the question and answer box, that Q and A box at the bottom of your screen and we will respond to those questions from that as well. So yeah, definitely different options. If people have questions, you can use that raise hand icon. If you're calling in, you're just going to push pound two on your phone. And then if anyone has any questions, you can type them in that question and answer box. I also want to bring your attention to the chat. There are a couple of links that Caitlin shared out for us around information that you can find out more about Smith Creek landfill. And we have a lot of landfill resources in general. So if you're looking to learn more about how landfills work, I know Rajesh showed us that really interesting graphic and with some kind of moving arrows, but we do have that as like a static thing as well if people want to just learn more about how a landfill works. Because I know when you live near a landfill, understanding how the process works is pretty important. So I know we have, our Materials Management Division has put together a lot of different video resources and other resources that we've linked to on that Smith Creek landfill webpage. So if you're interested, you can find those there. There's also a really interesting video about how our inspectors look at landfills and how we do some inspections using some pretty cool technology. So if people are interested in that, all of those links are going to be on that Smith Creek landfill page. So I want to just give everybody some, a time to decide if they want to ask any questions. We're obviously happy to get right into the We're obviously happy to get right into the hearing if that's what is necessary. But we do have staff here. Like I said, we've got our modelers, we've got meteorologists, we've got our air monitoring folks, our toxicologists. And of course, you heard from Viraj and Irana about the air quality division in general and a lot about how the permit application was reviewed and what you could expect to see in that proposed permit. All right. So I'm going to just give folks another minute or so here to see if we have any questions being typed into the chat. Don't want to move forward too quickly here. All right, Robert, hold on one second and we will unmute your mic so you can talk. So you should be able to unmute and go ahead and ask your question whenever you're ready.
Yeah. Good evening, Jennifer. Nice to see you and the team.
Thank you.
I just wanted to state that it looks like the chat is disabled. It's coming up disabled.
Yeah, the chat will be. So we're, the chat we use to kind of just give you guys information. So if you want to type a question, you should see the Q and A boxes. I call it a box. It's not really a box, but the icon on the bottom. Yeah. So did you have a question that you wanted to ask or were you just making sure?
Just to clarify, I believe I already know the answer, but the the permit is for a flare that is already installed for cell eight. It's not a new piece of equipment that it's going to authorize, correct?
So Viraj, do you want to address that question?
Yes. Yeah. So that's a good question. You're right. The permitting, the proposed project, the open flare is already installed in April 2024. And that's a reason Smith Creek applied for the permit and that's what it went to the review. So open flare and associated H2S scrubber, that is the project and that is the reason the main, what do you call the application is for.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. We appreciate it. We appreciate it. I'm having a hard time talking tonight. I'm not sure what's going on there, but we'll get there. All right. Anyone else have any other questions for the group before we move into the hearing portion? Give you guys just another minute or so, just to make sure nobody's typing. And then if we don't have any other questions, we'll go ahead and move right over into the hearing. We're fine with doing that as well. All right. Well, seeing none. Thank you, panelists. Appreciate your time and energy tonight. I'm going to go ahead and let you guys go and I'll ask Annette to turn her camera on. Oh, just one second. We got a question. Spoke too soon. All right. Thank you for that. So, um, all right. Okay. This is an interesting question. So this one is going to be for you, Steph. It's about the modeling and then Viraj, you might have some things to add as well. But I, I think it's important that Stephanie talks a little bit about how the modeling works and what we looked at in this case because remember we're looking at a very specific part of the landfill process, not the landfill in general. We're mostly looking at just this flare. So the question is, how can we use a computer modeling for worst case scenario when we don't really know what the worst case scenario was? And the reason they're posing this question is because this landfill had the first bioreactor landfill that was created. So again, this is, you know, air quality rules and regulations. A lot of times it can be confusing, but because the permit is for a specific thing, sometimes the way we do the modeling is different. So Steph, can you talk a little bit about that? And then V, if you have anything that you want to add, we'll throw it back to you.
Yes, I can go ahead and do that. Basically, for the modeling that we did, the worst case scenario is modeling that new flare. And we assume whatever the emissions are, the project emissions that were calculated, we will put that into the flare. And basically what a model is, is we just build kind of the landfill in a computer program. We, we put the new flare and the location that it is at the facility will add terrain into the model. We put, you know, because again, you can't measure something that's not there. So we have these kind of pseudo receptors, well, our pseudo monitors, we call them, but there are thousands of receptors that we put surrounding the facility. So basically what we want to do is act like that flare is up and running. Okay. Well, add meteorology to it now. And when the wind flow comes and the weather comes, how is that going to move that plume of emissions that are coming from this flare for the different pollutants that are being emitted? So we run, we ran that for a five year timeframe and then determined what is the overall maximum impact for the different pollutants. And if that maximum impact is meeting the either state or federal limits that are in place, it depends on what type of pollutant we're looking at. If it's a state rule we're looking at, or if it's a federal rule, we say modeling passes. And that was the case with this. We assumed, you know, like I said, the emissions, the maximum emissions are coming out for the different pollutants. We ran it in this computer model to simulate how it is running and how weather is affected or is affecting the plume. And then we take that maximum ground level concentration and compare it to either the screening levels or the EPA criteria pollutant levels. So I hope that that helps. I don't know if Viraj, do you have anything that you, you feel that you need to?
Actually, you covered very well, but I'm going to add a little bit more. So as a permit engineer, basically like, you know, I, we talked about those three circles, criteria pollutants, toxic air contaminants and the HAPs. So before Stephanie does the modeling, what I do is as a part of my review, I make sure the emission calculation is a potential termite as a worst case scenario based on the what applicant asked for. So in this case, they asked that how many, how much landfill gas is going to go to the open flare as a worst case scenario. So based on EPA emission factor, I do the emission calculation. So along with emission for each those pollutant and the stack height diameter. So I provide all of these ingredients after it's verified to Stephanie and she performed the modeling. So that's only portion I need to add that.
Yeah. Thanks for talking about that. I know one of the things that Steph does as well is when she runs her model, if any of those pseudo models or the little receptors that they put around the thousands of models, even if one of them doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. So that's really an important thing. It's not like we go, oh, well, 10%, then that's okay. It's like, no, every single one of those has to pass or the project can't move forward. So it's a really good question. Thanks a lot for asking that. I appreciate it.
And if I add a little bit more, like if you see in this application, when they propose, applicant proposed the project, the H2S scrubber was not in the place. The reason it was added later on, because in order to meet the rules and regulation, what Stephanie mentioned criteria pollutant. So in order to meet the criteria pollutant modeling or requirement, they end up putting the H2S scrubber. So as it, as we review it, it has a check and balance and to meet the requirement, they end up putting the H2S scrub.
No, thanks for talking about that. All right. So I'm not seeing any other questions or any other hands raised. I want to just make sure we give people a second here. Not seeing any others. Think we should be okay to go ahead and start the hearing. So now you guys can turn your cameras off. Should be good for the night. And I will ask you, I know you can't turn your camera on, I don't think, but maybe we can try it and see if it, oh, there we go. We can see you. Awesome. That's perfect. Okay. All right. So for the hearing portion of the night, like I said, it's a little bit different in that we won't be responding to questions that you might have. So one of the things that I like to go through before we get into the official hearing statement and things like that is just to talk a little bit about public comments. So something that a lot of people have asked of us in the past. People a lot of times have questions, you know, what is an appropriate comment? What can I comment on? What, you know, what doesn't cut the mustard, you know, that kind of thing. But everyone is free to say a comment about anything, anything that you would like to related to the permit application, the review process, the meeting tonight, you know, anything that you want, you can definitely put a comment in. There's no restrictions on that. There are comments that are more likely to lead to changes. So things that are going to be focused on the content of what the proposed permit looks like or things that are related to the technical review that seem incorrect or should be different, things like that. Things that are requesting that specific changes be made. So things that are least likely to lead to changes are things going, that are going to be like what Viraj talked about in the beginning, noise, light, things that are outside the scope of our air quality rules and regulations. Things that have to deal with whether or not a community member might support or oppose the permit, those things can't go into our decision. So again, welcome comments about those, but they can't influence the decision. So just like to talk a little bit about that before we get into the actual hearing portion of the night here. Okay. So we're going to move into that hearing portion. This does require me to read, just it's kind of a dry opening statement. Once I get to that, we will get to folks who've already indicated that they wanted to make a comment. We did have a couple of people that did and then we'll get to anybody else who would like to make a comment tonight. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon. I am with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And I will be the hearing officer tonight. Annette Switzer, our air quality division director is the decision maker for this permit application and she'll be listening to your comments this evening. She'll be considering all comments before making a decision. This hearing is related to a request from Smiths Creek landfill, an existing landfill located at 6779 Smiths Creek Road in Smiths Creek, Michigan. The request is to permit and operate an existing open flare in a proposed vacuum adsorption vessel for odor control or scrubber. The air quality division regulates sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can install and operate any new equipment, it must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to allow anyone interested in the proposed permit, the opportunity to provide information we can use in deciding whether to approve the permit or if there are additional issues to consider. The proposed permit is still a draft permit. This does not mean a decision has already been made. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit will help you provide comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and for their consideration, including whether the permit will be issued at all. As we review comments, we can only use information you provide to make changes if it is within our authority. So for example, comments about local zoning, truck traffic and noise cannot be considered as part of the decision. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We're happy to note your position, but please under this, understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information we consider in making a decision. The public comment period began on October 10th and will end at midnight on November 26, 2024. Additional comments or information may be submitted via written or verbal comment during this hearing by email or by voicemail. After the public comment period closes, all written and verbal comments will be reviewed. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point the decision maker makes a final decision. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and/or attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. The mailing will include a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and if applicable, the approved permit. So please recognize our staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and listen to your comments. As a reminder, you do not need to comment tonight to have your comment considered. You may submit a written comment anytime during the comment period by US post or email or you may call in a comment to the public comment voicemail and I'll go over how to do this after the hearing. You may submit your comment in writing tonight by typing the word comment into the question box and then writing your comment. We will limit your comment time to about three minutes and when you're speaking, I'll let you know when you have around 30 seconds left or so. I'll begin calling the names of the people who indicated they would like to make a verbal comment tonight. And once we get through that initial list, anyone who would like to make a comment will be able to do so, even if you have not already indicated you would like to comment when you registered for the meeting. So we just had two people that registered ahead of time for the meeting and that was Robert Felix and Sheri Shockraft. So I'm not sure if Sheri is on. We already talked to Robert. I don't see Sheri, but we'll keep an eye just in case she does end up coming on. So Robert, you're going to be first here if you would like to make a comment.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. I'm Robert Felix.
I'm sorry. I don't, didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure that, I think you already know how to do this. But make sure you just state your name and then any affiliation that you have for the record before you start your comment.
Thank you. Start my three minutes over, please. I'm, I'm Robert Felix, St. Clair County Commissioner-elect for the fifth district, which includes the landfill, Smiths Creek landfill. I live in Kimball Township, a mile and a half from the landfill. First, I want to thank the staff of Eagle. I've met several of you and corresponded with many more. A year and a day ago, November 20th, kicked this off with a town hall meeting in Kimball Township, attended by hundreds, if not more residents. And since that time, Eagle has fought ferociously for the clean air in our community and we appreciate it. I recognize that the failure was on the part of the county and the direction they took and they are currently subject to an enforcement action from Eagle and there is a pending class action sued. So that has to be played out. Unfortunately for me, being a county commissioner, January, this becomes my problem also. What my official comment is for tonight doesn't pertain to the actual flare. I recognize the flare is in place. It's needed and I must say, I do hope it will be approved. But I want to comment in general about the RDDP and the bioreactor, subbage bioreactor specifically. I recognize this was brought in under the DEQ and way earlier administration, but I just want to voice my concern moving forward as much as possible. I'm sharing and I'd like this team to share with Eagle that these new projects and experiments need to be carefully monitored, audited, perhaps increased inspection frequencies, realizing you're limited by budget in some cases law. That would be what I would request. I think a lot of this could have been minimized earlier. We had a particular county commissioner that was a little aggressive about the bioreactor project and things went from there. So I am working with several groups that are consulting with state level as well as federal EPA to increase monitoring for these types of experiments and specifically for methane collection. So that is my comment. I would request that this be made public, that I would like to see more intervals of monitoring, stricter auditing and things when there is an experimental RDDP in process, even though this was a mature one. The detriment to our community and to the county will be very large for a long time to come. Thank you very much and thank you for the work you do.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your comment. We really appreciate that. So at this time, we didn't have anyone else on the list to give a comment. So if anybody would like to make a comment that is attending the meeting tonight, you can just click on that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen and that will lift you up to the top of our list so we can unmute your line and you can ask and you can make your comment. Again, we do have folks calling in, so just want to reiterate if you'd like to make a comment, we're happy to have you do that as well. You can just press pound two on your phone and that will raise your hand for us. Also just wanted to mention that if you would like to make a comment in writing tonight, you are more than welcome to do that as well. Just type the word comment into the question box and then type your comment. We often have people do that. But again, just use that raise hand icon if you'd like to make a comment tonight. And if not, that's okay. We'll go over other ways that folks can make a comment. If they'd like to, oh, Sheri, great. I see that you are, you've raised your hand. I might, might have missed you with my eyes and I apologize for that. So hold on one second and you should be able to just state your name and any affiliation that you have for the record and then go ahead and make your comment whenever you're ready.
Hi Jennifer. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. So my affiliation is just that I'm a resident that has been pretty involved in. So uh, my affiliation is just that I'm a resident um, that has been pretty involved in this whole process of what's been going on with the landfill. Um, so I wanted to say that whatever um, permits need to happen to keep our air clean, I think that's very important. Um, I also just want to make the comment that um, I'm, I'm really grateful for Eagle and everything that you've been doing uh, for our community as far as um, the landfill and everything that we've gone through. Um, it has not gone unnoticed and just super grateful for that. But as far as the, as the permit for the air quality, like I said, if it's going to um, keep that flare from producing hydrogen sulfide again, uh, I think that that's going to be important. So just wanted to say thank you for all that Eagle's doing and it's, it's really meant a lot to our community, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sherry, appreciate the comment. Alright, anyone else who would like to make a comment tonight? Just use that raise hand icon or we'll give you everybody a minute or so in case somebody's typing into the question box, I don't want to cut anybody off. Okay, I see Deanna Westfall, you've got your hand up. Um, so if you don't mind just stating your name for the record and then any affiliation you have before you start your comment, you should be able to start your comment.
Hi, my name's Deanna Westfall, I live in uh, Kimball, on Smiths Creek Road actually. Um, I've been involved with the landfill since we started smelling everything when there was no flare and we had to um, bring attention to Eagle and let you guys know that they needed a flare over there. So my question is, as I'm looking through the um, planned project, it says that there's two turbines that are going to be needing to run for this flare, is that, are there already two turbines running for the flare? Or is that another turbine that's going to be added? I guess I'm just confused how there was never a flare put in until we brought the attention to it. And now as I read about it, it looks like we're adding more equipment to the flare and the permit.
Remember, we can't answer, we can't respond to questions right now, but we'll lodge those as a comment and we will respond to your question in the comment, response to comments, just want to let you know that. And we're happy to talk and answer questions um, later on if you have more to.
Yes, thank you.
Was there anything else you wanted to add to your comment, I don't want to cut you off too early, but I wanted to just make sure.
No, that's it really, I just wanted to know kind of more um, about, I mean, now that we've gotten here after bringing it to this point, like how much more needs to be added to make it right, you know, that's all.
That sounds good, yeah, thank you for your comment then.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any other comments? That they'd like to put on the record here? I'll just give you a little bit more time and just make sure we're not cutting anyone off. And if no one else has any comments, we can close the hearing and we'll move into the little bit of last portion of the evening. Okay, seeing none, Annette, are you okay with me closing the hearing?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, so I just have a brief closing statement to read and then we'll move on to a couple other things. So thank you so much for taking the time to participate tonight, we appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. So as indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on November twenty six, twenty twenty four. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit, so the hearing is now closed, thank you again. So just a couple other things to mention before we end the meeting tonight. So we talked about other ways that you can submit an official comment, I always like to emphasize this because sometimes people don't want to speak their comments out loud and that's totally fine. Um, so you feel free to submit your comment in writing if you'd like to, you can send those in. Um, we even will say on a note card or napkin or you know, anything that you feel comfortable with. You can email those comments to us as well at eagle dash A Q D dash P T I public comments at Michigan dot gov. And then one of the easiest ways to lodge a comment is just to call the voicemail, so that number is five one seven two eight four zero nine zero zero. So all of the information that we talked about tonight related to Verjish and the team's review of the permit application is at that Michigan dot gov slash eagle air public notice, so you'll find the um, the draft permit conditions, I can go to this slide I guess to show you, talk about it a little bit more. So the proposed project summary, that's just a high level overview, so that's going to give you, you know, a a little bit about the flare, what they're requesting, a little bit about emissions, some some about the review, but it's very high level. That technical fact sheet, I know Verjish mentioned it a couple of times, it goes really into the weeds on the rules and regulations, how they apply, the review that he did to ensure that this request would meet those national ambient air quality standards and the other rules and regulations. You'll find the proposed permit terms and conditions, if you're not used to looking at those, they can look a little um, technical and crazy. So again, we're happy to talk to people about what are you looking at if you need help understanding that, you know, we're definitely there to provide that assistance. We'll also per um, link the recording of this meeting as soon as we can. We'll share that out via email to everybody who was on the meeting tonight too, just because it will get to you faster that way, I think. Um, so who can you talk to, so I know Deanna had some questions in her comments, so if any, if her or anyone else has any further questions, um, we're happy to chat through things with you. So um, have everybody's contact information on the screen here. Uh, just as a reminder, Verjish is the permit engineer, so he's gonna have most of that nitty gritty detailed information about what the company was asking for, his review, what does that mean? Um, complaints and inspections, you can reach out to Arana. Um, of course, folks familiar with the Smiths Creek landfill um, know hopefully how to submit complaints if you have them. Um, we're happy to take those, um, Arana and the other, the rest of the team in the Warren, in our Warren District Office have been really good about being responsive to complaints, so we definitely want to keep hearing if um, there's issues out there. Um, Erica Wolf, again, talking about monitoring, that's those stationary monitors that are around the state looking at our outdoor air quality and making sure that it's meeting the rules and regulations. You heard from Steph tonight on mo- modeling, um, we didn't get to hear from Rick, but Rick is um, our toxicologist, so he's also great if folks have questions on that. And then we were lucky to have Erin from our waste management, I'm sorry, materials management division, wow, I just went back in time there for a second. Um, and he was obviously listening to everything, so um, great person to ask questions as well. So with that being said, I think that's it for tonight, so thank you so much for joining us, really appreciate the questions, appreciate the comments, appreciate your time most of all. So thank you very much for joining us, uh, thank you to my panelists for being willing to be on tonight as well. So Caitlin, whenever you're ready, if you want to go ahead and end the meeting, that would be great. So thanks everybody and have a great night.